Okay, we will call it a order. The regular meetings of the Batavia City Council for Monday, May 20th, 2019. And I ask that you all please rise for briefcase. We come by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, as the city council meets in regular session, we are ever mindful that we are closing in on the Memorial Day weekend when our nation pays tribute to those who have served in the defense of our liberties of the United States of America for a number of battles and a number of wars over many, many years. Tonight, we want to remember those from our community who gave the ultimate sacrifice and who stood up and answered the call to duty on a number of occasions and who continue to do so in the troubled world that we live in today. And we just ask that those who are moving forward under the defenses of the liberties of the United States of America, that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission. We also ask that a special blessing be showered upon all those who are no longer with us but who serve so admirably and ably in defending our liberties as a nation and preserving our freedom. Also tonight, we ask for direction and vision and understanding by the members of the city council as we act on the items of business before us, knowing that in our hearts and minds, each and every member of the council is here to do what in their own thoughts are the best interest of the community of Batavia. We also appreciate today the fact that we are a community that is blessed on many, many fronts. And among the items on our agenda tonight is the appointment of a number of paid-on-call recruits to the Batavia Fire Department. And we just want to ask for a special blessing showered upon them and all those from our community who are serving us in the public safety forces, that they be granted a special blessing as they go about their vital missions of defending and serving and helping Batavia become a safe and honorable place for all of us to live and raise our families. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Miller, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then ask for the city clerk to call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Janzett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uhr?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
The record deflected 12 of the 14 elected aldermen are present at council for this evening's meeting.
And then Alderman Knop is electronically participating.
Yes, he is. And we need a voting member?
No.
And then we went to see his old man, Malley, and he emailed me and said that he was hopefully could be at the meeting around 8:00 o'clock. So I testified that you were coming in. Okay, moving then to a reminder to everyone to please use the microphone as we speak tonight because as all these recordings are being photographed and recorded on BATV and we don't use our mics, it's harder for people to hear, so we do ask that everybody that's speaking do use the mic. And if you're coming up to address the council, please use the podium and use the mic at the podium. At this time then, we will move to item five, which are items to remove, add or change on the agenda. Alderman McFadden, do you have anything to say?
I do, thank you, your honor. I understand the mayor would like to split the mayor's report into two parts this evening, with the first part coming right after the consent agenda, so we'll put that in as 6A. Is that correct, your honor?
Yes.
All right, perfect. I make motion, then we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. A motion and second. And the agenda, just so everybody in the council is aware, I'm not trying to pull any fast ones here. The mayors in the area, I've been to several meetings the last couple of weeks, are continuing to raise their concerns about the crime and the violence that's taking place in the area. And so we've come up with this idea of proclaiming June 7th as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And they've asked all the mayors to just make a presentation at the council meetings and not advocate for removing anybody's guns or anything else, but just make a statement about the need for everybody to be concerned about the war on violence. And we do have mothers against guns in the audience here tonight, and they're going to receive the proclamation from me, and it's nothing too controversial, hopefully.
Here, here.
There's really, I will read it in a moment, and there's nothing in it that anybody needs to get too excited about.
So we're not going to be here until midnight tonight?
Argue.
We're not going to be here until midnight tonight?
I'm going to be here, so. Any other discussion on that? We'll call the roll and the motion to change the agenda.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Uhr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda is approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to item six, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman McFadden, would you please present?
Well, thank you, your honor. The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file the January, February, and March 2019 city council reports, building reports for April 2019. Approvals are: May 10th, 2019 payroll in the amount of $863,954.58. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,305,212.91. The city council minutes for May 6th, 2019. And a Class B1 package sales liquor license application for Chicago Tavern Group Batavia LLC, DBA as Crown Liquors at 135 First Street. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Janzett for the approval of the consent agenda, or of the consent agenda as approved or presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Uhr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, as per the action on the agenda, I am honored to present the following proclamation, which I might note is going to be done by a number of mayors in the Chicagoland area over the next week. And again, we did it, so it's just a mayoral thing, and we didn't want to stir a whole bunch of folks into debate and everything else, so any mayor that wanted to do this made the decision we would just go ahead and do it at the meetings. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas every day 100 Americans are killed by gun violence and on average there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed by guns than people in other high-income countries. And whereas protecting public safety in communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas the support of the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hands in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their community best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and know how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas in January of 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 22nd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiya and 100 Americans whose lives are cut short by countless survivors and countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 7th, 2019, the first Friday in June, as the Fifth Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked that their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color based on hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when they're out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone who joined the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7th, the first Friday in June 2019, is helping to make awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing the orange on June 7th, Americans will raise their awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of Batavia, Illinois, declare June 7th, 2019, the first Friday of June, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support our community's efforts to prevent tragic events of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Signed by myself as mayor." So I have the ladies here from Moms Demanding Action, and if you would come up, and I'd like to present this to you. And would I get to say anything? Your honor?
Would you like the city council to take a vote on that, to support that?
I don't think there'll be anyone who wouldn't support what you just read.
Let's do that. I know, there was some concern because you get the gun issue, that some people would take concerns about it, and this is all the mayor's talking now. So the idea was we would just all have the mayors do it, but if you want to make a motion about it, I don't.
We've definitely spoken about this as a group. We're definitely concerned about this, and we definitely support the words that you just said. So I would make a motion to accept the proclamation as read.
Second.
Okay, we motion and second for the approval of the proclamation for June 7th. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Uhr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Okay, the motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Now, would you like to make?
We don't have anything prepared. We just want to say thank you for your support. This is something our group, Kane and Kendall, Moms Demand Action, has been working towards recognizing National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and we are just appreciative of the support in Batavia and from Mayor Shelkey.
Thank you. Okay, another very positive action by the council tonight is going to be seven, which is the appointment of paid-on-call fire department recruits. And I ask Chief Dyke if you would introduce these gentlemen, and then we will prepare for the non-lead.
Good evening. We have five new paid-on-call to swear in tonight, so it's pretty exciting. We have Sean Adams. He is just finishing up at College DuPage in the basic firefighter program. He is an EMTB, and he works for Red Day Ambulance. We have Jared Beckman. He lives in Batavia. He is a basic operations firefighter, paramedic, and he is also a paid-on-call in the Sugar Grove Fire Department. We have Tyler Hoffman. He has an associate's degree in fire science, and he is finishing up his basic firefighter program over at College DuPage. We have Craig Lottie. He is completing the College DuPage program, and he is already an EMTB. And then Brendan Sullivan. He is a firefighter, EMTB, and he also works over at the Sugar Grove Fire Department.
So I entertain a motion for the council's approval of my appointment of these gentlemen to be a member of the Batavia Paid-on-Call firm.
So moved, second.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry, but about three of you did it over there. Alderman, do second it. Alderman Salvati. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Uhr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
All right, guys, I got to have you come up here and stand in the circle facing this direction so we can get to all of you. Circle right here, and then get out in front of you.
Jeff, you want to grab a microphone?
Okay.
You can't go too far.
First of all, let me, what are you going to do? Give me the other mic? Better. First of all, let me thank each and every one of you for your willingness to step forward and join our paid-on-call department, and hopefully this is going to be the first step in what will turn into be a career for each and every one of you on, you know, some department. One of the things I take great pride in Batavia is that we do have the paid-on-call force, and we do bring into the business a whole bunch of very qualified men and women who, if they don't get a job with us, they go to other departments and test and get hired. So this is a great experience generator for you, and I appreciate it very much. There's a joke here at the city council that you got to be careful who you swear in as a paid-on-call fireman, because many, many years ago, I stood where you're standing and did the same thing. So you can never know where you're going to end up once you join the paid-on-call fire department, but myself, I ended up as the mayor, so that's the way it all flushes out. But if you would all, five of you, raise your right hands and repeat after me. I instate your names. Having been appointed to the position of paid-on-call recruit with the Batavia Fire Department, in the cities of, in the counties of Kane and DuPage, through sound we swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will basically discharge the duties of the position of paid-on-call recruit with the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Well, there goes most of the audience. Okay, moving to item number eight, which is matters from the public. Item's not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening for something that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving then to presentation on Batavia Main Street. Chris?
Guess I know how to clear a room, huh? I thought everybody was here for Jeremy to win the water award. Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Couple things coming up here. June 1st is a big day in Batavia, less than two weeks away now. That's the kickoff of the 24th Annual Outdoor Farmers Market up on River Street. That's also Well-Batavia Festival. That's also Race to Market, our opening day 5K. So a lot of stuff going on. Expect a good 2,000 to 3,000 people in town that day. Nice to get everybody back out in the warm weather, wandering around downtown Batavia on the weekends like they do all summer long. So we are excited to get rolling with it. You know, the common theme amongst all of those activities taking place that day is healthy living and wellness. We have over 35 farmer's market vendors, all local business, selling local-grown, healthy produce for people. And that doesn't include the 20 artisan collective vendors that will be here every third Saturday of the month, all throughout the summer. We have registration open for Race to Market, the 5K. We changed things up this year. Instead of giving the T-shirts that everybody has been getting at races for years, we switched it up. We have a nice reusable farmer's market bag that we're going to give out to people, and everybody who participates in Race to Market also gets a $5 coupon to spend at the farmer's market sometime in the summer. So just something different we're going to try this year. And then at the end of the farmer's market down on River Street between State and Spring, you will see the Well-Batavia Initiative headed up by Sarah Greenhagen, who's a brand-new local business owner, and very own alderwoman Abby Beck. And the Well-Batavia Initiative, that's a community action committee working to promote healthy behaviors through partnerships and policy, and make health resources and knowledge accessible to all. The team is comprised of local experts and activists in the fields of health, environmental science, planning, and economics, who understand that health is the way we interact with ourselves, our neighbors, and the environment. For more information on that, you can check out their website at wellbatavia.com. Also happening at Main Street, we had another wayfinding meeting here in City Hall with the city and several other of the local partners who are involved in that project. Things are moving forward, and we're very excited about that on our end of it. Also, Cocktails in the Park, not until July, but tickets went on sale last week, and there's been a lot of action on that so far. One thing we did this year is we put together a ticket package where you can buy a ticket to Cocktails in the Park, as well as a ticket to the Dinner Table event that comes up in August. That has far and away been the most popular thing that we've offered, and that's been pretty much what everybody has purchased so far. We also have some new little concierge packages this year where you can buy a whole picnic table, and that comes with waitstaff and that kind of stuff throughout the night. So check out downtownbatavia.com to get your tickets for that. We've been hiring at Main Street. Kathy McNally, our special events and development director, will be leaving us at the end of the month here. She's got a couple of weeks left, and so we've been hiring some people. We actually split that job into three part-time jobs, and I have spent a lot of time doing interviews over the past few weeks and making some really hard decisions, but we have a new staff. Looks like they're ready to go, and I'll probably be bringing them next time I'm here in June to introduce them to all of you folks. We do have some volunteer opportunities available. Some of our committees, Oktoberfest could use a few more people, Block Party could use some more people. We could use a couple of people to help with the Well-Batavia event. So anybody who's interested in volunteering for any Main Street activities that we do or getting involved with us, just kind of want to put the word out there that we could use a few more people. So send us an email, info@downtownbatavia.com, or just give me a call in the office, 630-761-3528, and we'd be happy to get some new people involved. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah, I've got one for you. I have been called here at the office several times in the last couple of days by people who apparently don't have a computer or whatever. They want to know what are the dates of Cocktails in the Park and the Dinner Table?
Give me a second. If I don't look, I'll get it wrong. I think it's July 20th. Yeah, July 20th for Cocktails in the Park, and August 4th, yeah, August 4th for the Dinner Table.
Okay.
Is it?
Very good. I think, appreciate it. I was going to have to call you tomorrow if you hadn't have been standing.
There we go. I saved you the trouble.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was a question today, the other day. Okay, moving then to another good piece of news, and that's a presentation by Jeremy Barki on the Water of Batavia Water voted best tasting in Illinois.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Jeremy Barki, and I am part of what I believe is an elite team of water operators here at the City of Batavia Water and Sewer Department. In December of 2018, at the Kane County Water Association Annual Water Taste Test Competition, the City of Batavia tied with Geneva for the best tasting water in Kane County. This award gave Batavia Water the opportunity to compete at the state level. In March of this year, the city competed at the annual ISA WWA Water Con Conference in Springfield. Ms. Jennifer Barless of the ISA WWA is here to explain the taste test competition in further detail. Ms. Barless chaired the competition.
Evening, everyone. As Jeremy indicated, I'm Jennifer Barless. I was the chair, or I am the chair of the ISA WWA. That's the Illinois section of the American Waterworks Association. And so I'm the committee chair for the water drink contest, water taste contest. And in my real life during the day, I worked for an engineering company, but so what I'm here tonight to do is to present to the excellent water team that you have, and to tell you guys an awesome award, and to tell you a little bit about the contest and a little bit about who was involved in it. Just so you can have some background, because you guys are, the City of Batavia is now the recipient of the best tasting water in Illinois. So I know, I'm not sure that you've had that dubious honor before, but it is quite an honor, and I'm not taking it lightly. It is really neat to see the competition. I've done this for a couple of years, and it's kind of neat to see the water taste contest and the communities showing their pride and enthusiasm for what they do when they send their teams down. So basically, as Jeremy indicated, contests are held locally throughout the state. The winners of the contest then attend the state conference for Waterworks Association, and our competition is held there. This year, we had, aha, this year we had six total contestants throughout the state. Not every region holds a water taste contest, but I keep trying to cheerlead it. The winners of the local regions that the City of Batavia competed against was the City of Rockford. They won, obviously, locational, it's the northwest part of the state. Tie here at the Kane County Water Association with the City of Geneva and the City of Batavia. I'm sure there's not really often much competition between the two cities, but, you know.
Never.
The South Suburban Waterworks Association was won by the Village of Park Forest. They competed. Also, the Illinois American Water for the Champaign County Mattis Water Treatment Plant, try to say that fast, three times. And returning champs from last year who had the awesome honor was the City of Moline. And last but not least, the large water agency won, actually. The Central Lake County Joint Action Water Agency, the Jawa, won for Lake County. So those were the competitors. The City of Batavia contest was won, and City of Batavia was judged by, we have typically its local public figures, as well as awesome, I believe they're called taste analyzers or something along those lines. I make up all kinds of names for these judges. But we had our special guest, the president-elect of AWA, Jim Williams, who attended our state conference and presided over the judging. The honor of best taste test, and we don't rank them, just in case you were going to ask me, the honor of best taste test, water taste test, went to the City of Batavia. I'll just say hands down, because no one knows but me what the scoring was, but went to the city. I did want to mention, it's important, I think it's important, I have been a lifelong Kane County resident, and I think it's important to make sure, and I know Mayor Shelkey has been here for many, many years, and just a few, and he, and you all are working hard to make sure, as well as the team here, to make sure that the water is, the water quality is good, awesome, and that it's available for everybody to partake in. So I wanted to just say thank you, city and Public Works Department, for sending a team down to the state competition. And also, all the state competitors, by the way, are invited to attend the national conference coming up in June called ACE, and that is going to be held in Denver. I'm sure it's not a very interesting city, so I'm sure Jeremy will not have fun, but it's being held next month in Denver, and all of the state competitors will be competing. So I'm going to bid you guys good luck early. But I do have a couple of items that I just want to present to, if I could, to Jeremy and the water team. If you guys could come forward? Do we have just a second to do that?
That's cool.
Okay, thanks. And maybe if that nice gentleman with that cool fancy camera could come over. You guys got to come up here. I did all the talking. You just stand up here. Come on. So this is, as I indicated, certificate from the Illinois section, AWA, American Waterworks Association, Lori Stenzel, our Illinois Chair for the State of Illinois, Chair of the organization this year. First place certificate for the City of Batavia. I'd like to present that. I'd like to present that, if I could, really quick.
Jeremy, do you have one additional item to present?
This is really important. It may come in handy during those drink contests I heard about a minute ago in the park, but this is our trophy that we hand out every year, a trophy. It has been inscribed as ISA WWA 2019 Best Water Taste, Tasting, Best Tasting Water for the City of Batavia. It's a drink of water mug, just in case anybody was wondering.
So I'd like to present that to Jeremy. Maybe I can picture him?
You're right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's certainly an honor for Batavia to have this bestowed upon us and that type of competitive competition. I will share with you that, as you already have alluded to, I've had this honor of being the mayor here for 38 years, so I've been around for quite a while. And there was a time when I would go to meetings with people and people would bring up, they didn't like the way the Batavia water would taste. But I would tell you that in the last several years, I always speak a couple of, every year to several senior citizen groups, and they're a fairly volatile group to speak to them because they tell you what they think. They don't care. And it used to be they'd make some noise about water, but last couple of years, they're patting me on the shoulder and saying, "Mayor, the water really is tasting real good around here these days." So I think there is something to it because when that group kind of changes their tune and comes on and strongly appreciates what they're drinking, I think that speaks wonders for, this really must be a great honor. So I appreciate you coming out and doing it and I appreciate the great efforts of our team under Jeremy's direction because we certainly are making Batavia a great place to taste the water, so.
Your Honor, look quick. Water is kind of a subjective thing. I'm just curious, what, how do you rate what water tastes like and why is Batavia the best?
Oh, I knew you'd ask me that question and I had the answer.
I'm just, I'm just trying to handicap whether.
I wasn't sure how much time we had, but I'll tell you real quick what the criteria was. The criteria for judging, the flavor profile analyzers judged upon, it's, it's quality. Oh, you got me, you got me. I thought I had it right here marked for you. Dang it. It's, I'm going to get back to you on that. Boy, you caught me right off guard, didn't you?
Quality. Let's say quality. There are three criteria and for, it was easy enough for local public figures who know about water, who don't know about water could, could judge on that, so.
We just want to make sure it was water. We heard there was some chatter that maybe it was a brewery nearby.
Well, the judges were really happy after they did all that tasting for the contest, I must say. They smiled and giggled a lot, but yeah, it was, it was water, I promise. The water is brought in and it's all done very securely, as Jeremy will attest. We take it, we grab it, we kind of put it away and we make sure no one can get into it to put any other clear liquid in or otherwise, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I apologize, you caught me off guard, sorry.
Appreciate, really appreciate you coming down and sharing this with us.
Thank you. I hope you guys continue to, I know you continue to support the water efforts, as you indicated, Mayor, but also the team here because they're kind of the wheels that make it go round. Thank you.
Round of applause for the water.
Okay, now we have item 11, which is a proclamation about National Public Works Week, but I don't have a proclamation. Do we know where that's at?
I was told that actually would be here. I'll have to blame him.
Maybe I should have you go back and sit down and we'll see if we can find the proclamation. Okay, while Gary is waiting, let's move then to item 12, which is Ordinance 19-28, Amending the Text to the Zoning Code. Who's got this one?
I'll take that.
Alderman, Wolf?
We didn't have any chair or vice chair at the, at the hall. And load, hold on a second. Let me pull this up. This was a zoning code amendments, text amendments. This was from the May 14th Committee, the whole meeting, about accessory structure regulation, which we had quite a lengthy discussion on. Basically, what we came up with was that we would change the code to allow no more than 10% of the area of the lot could be accessory structures. We did not put how many in a number form. And then we also banned the shipping containers from use as an accessory structure. And those were the two main things that came out of that. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a discussion point that I thought about it some more after I voted a little reluctantly, if, if nobody noticed my pause last week. The 10% may not be enough, so I was just thinking about some of the smaller properties that already have detached garages can be in a situation where they may be close to that already and then they'd be prohibited from putting up a shed without coming in and talking to us to, and going through all the variance and everything. So my vote's going to change on that tonight.
Yeah, I think that with a standard, standardized 10% across, the board will be difficult on small lots and probably not restrictive enough on large lots.
Yeah. Marty?
Yeah, I thought Alderman Chancet had brought up a point about St. Charles' ordinances was closer to ours than the other cited one, which was North Aurora. But even then, I think that goes to the point that that ordinance is along the lines of 30%. So I'm still reluctant because I don't feel that we've identified necessarily an issue and that's why when we were going back and forth about the numbers, we were, we were banning the numbers around back and forth without really thinking about what we're trying to accomplish. Is there something in 10%, 30%? So in my mind, it's not settled as a need to do this at this point and I kind of, it was confirmed with the arbitrariness of the numbers that we were actually choosing, that we didn't pick a number for a specific reason. I could understand if it had mirrored the surrounding localities in full, but it's not, so my vote will still be a no.
Alderman Chancet?
The staff did say that there, there have been complaints though, right? We are responding to complaints. I just want to, I just want to be clear on that. If we need to talk about this, we can send it back to committee a second time because I do, I do support some sort of regulation on this because I don't want staff to continue to deal with complaints if we're not going to give them direction. So we should send it back to committee if, if we're not 100% on board here.
Can you offer some stuff?
Yeah, we, we have had fielded some complaints about the size and some of these structures from, from people. So they typically haven't gotten up to the Alderman because the structure's already there at that point and there's really nothing that can be done, so, but we have fielded some complaints. And then also just for clarity, the 30% with St. Charles is based on the yard, not the entire lot. So that's why it's a different percentage than the 30, than the 10% that's being proposed here.
Yeah, because I just thought about it, like for my own lot, I could put as an accessory structure on my lot that is bigger in a footprint than my house if we use 10%, which I think if we don't restrict it like that, we're going to end up with situations where it's within the law and people are going to build bigger structures if we don't change it. So I think it needs to be changed to what we've got. I just wish we had a number with it too because I think seven little structures just doesn't cut it in somebody's backyard.
Well, you want to send us back to committee then?
I guess I would just ask, do you think 10% is going to inundate us with variance requests?
I don't think so. I mean, if you look at a small lot that's 4,000 square feet, they could put a 400 square foot structure, which is a two-car garage. I mean, it's, you know, 4,000 square feet is a pretty small lot, so it still gives, you know, a pretty ample allowance for accessory structures.
If we do move forward with this and you do run into a situation where you are recommending someone having to do a variance, if we could fast-track that to discuss it because I don't want to impede somebody from putting up a logical structure, I guess, would that, would that help, Mark?
Yes.
It helps, but I guess we don't have an inventory, so we don't know how many of our lots already are small and already have a detached garage and then are at that limit. So we don't, we don't even know what problem it might cause, I guess. Again, it hearkens back to bed and breakfast that we cause a problem.
Hello, McNally?
Yeah, and I just, I'm very leery of some complaints. We don't have a quantified number. I don't know if it's one, I don't know if it's 20. I know we did kind of, there was another issue that we had had, that we wanted to actually see the numbers that went along with it and it turned out to be like one or two and we were like, "Why are we creating law for one or two incidents?" And I think that's all I'm looking for is more empirical data to justify why we're changing law.
I would support sending it back to committee for a second time, so we're all on the same page.
Yes.
I don't have any problem with the 10%, but I think our concern in the beginning, Scott, was how many units or how many structures somebody could have on a lot. And what bothers me is if somebody has an acre and they could put eight or 10 unit structures on their lot, that, if I were a neighbor, they would make me upset. Absolutely. So I, I think the number of structures we have to include because I think the 10%, as we said, on a one-acre lot, you could have 4,000 feet of building space and somebody could have 10 structures and I don't agree with something like that.
So what's our? I want to send it back to committee and hopefully get it figured out a third time. Okay, we'll send it back to committee.
All right, then we can jump back now to the proclamation, Gary. Who's the?
You can hang on to that one. I've got a, got a copy of it up over here. Yep. All right, we'll do the proclamation. The, for National Public Works Week, proclamation reads as follows. Whereas public works, work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works, work systems such as streets, water, wastewater, and electric, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the City of Batavia. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life on this 20th day of May 2019. Signed, Mayor Jeffrey D. Shelkey.
Want to make a motion for its approval?
Yeah, I move we approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
Motion by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Meitzler. Kirk, hold the roll.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Approval of the proclamation is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, one absent. Gary, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Before I talk about Public Works Week, I wanted to once again acknowledge Jeremy. Jeremy's here tonight with Jason and Sean and Tommy and Jim. We also have Dan and Dan and Todd, who can't be here tonight, but all of them together have done a great job of producing safe, clean water for the citizens of Batavia. I am confident that our score, which remains secretive, is still much higher than that score which Geneva achieved. That I am talking about, but I did want to acknowledge their, their efforts and really say thank you to them. Tomorrow morning, we have our National Public Works Week annual event, our reading of truck tales at the library. American Public Works Association produces stuff for kids that we hand out every year. Typically, it's stickers and pencils and workbooks and coloring books and we'll give away all those things tomorrow, but if they come out, 10 o'clock tomorrow at the library, basically geared towards preschool-type-aged children, tomorrow there'll be an extra surprise. I'm not going to give it away tonight, but the pictures, you'll see in the pictures what the extra surprise is and the little kids will like it, so. That, that event goes on every year and again, I just wanted to thank my entire department for all the efforts that they do throughout the year, all those late nights and cold nights and wet and rainy nights that they all respond to keep the quality of life high for everyone in town, so, thank you. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Gary. Keep up the great job. Appreciate all the good things that you and your department do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to 13, which is Ordinance 19-39, annexing 216, 221, 224, and 229 Whipple Avenue.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have that tonight. This is our ongoing quest to get all the township properties that are unincorporated, little islands throughout the city incorporated and then annexed to the city. Some of the properties that we have done have been involuntary, some have been voluntary. Most are done under the voluntary basis and typically we don't force people to hook up to any of the services that they already have provided from other sources, whether it be well and septic or electric or sewer water. We, we wait until there's any issues with the services that they already have and then they would switch over at that point. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I'll start off with the first, I think it was four on Whipple Street, would be Ordinance 19-39, annexing 216, 221, 224, and 229 Whipple Avenue. Make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Scott?
Yes, just so you know, this one, we did get the fourth petition, so that all four in this particular one are actually voluntary now.
Voluntary, okay.
So we did receive the last one today.
Okay.
And then also, we do need to allow people to speak about it.
Right. So all four of these are voluntary and is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council on these? Anyone for these properties? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, second on the fourth then, for the approval of Ordinance 19-39. Kirk, hold the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-39 is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to 14, which is Ordinance 19-40, annexing 741, 749, 757, and 801 Pine Street.
Okay, this would be the, the four lots on Pine Street. Are these all voluntary or is there an involuntary in this?
Three of them are involuntary, one we did receive a petition for, so majority is involuntary.
Anybody in the audience want to address the city council?
Will you come up and use the mic, please? Give us your name and address, so.
Four, 741 and 749. Fixed income, teacher with three children, single. What is the cost to hook up to the sewer city and water, and I mean all the way to the house? Does anybody have a ballpark idea?
hook up are going to vary, depending on how many fixtures you have in the house and the height of meter. Some are around $7,000 to $11,000 for all, both water and sewer.
And that's tying onto your city main, bringing it all the way to their household and tying onto their service, or just bringing it to the right-of-way?
Yeah, that's the city fee, so you would have to talk to a plumber about what their cost would be to actually do the, the hookup work.
So $11,000 to $12,000 is a ballpark figure for both?
For both water and sewer, it'd be less if it's just one service.
And that includes going all the way to their houses, not stopping in the right-of-way?
That's, that's the fee for the connection. There would be additional costs to actually do the plumbing runs.
Oh, okay, so...
Talk to a plumber on what that cost would be.
If your sanitary sewer is on the other side of the road, someone would have to dig down?
Correct.
Connect, tie on. So you're talking another $25,000 to do both things.
Depending on the circumstances, right?
Yeah, I mean, easily. So it could easily run into $30,000?
It's probably pretty high, but, you know, that, I mean, it depends, again, it depends on what the service is.
You'd have to pave the road. I don't know if there's concrete underneath the asphalt.
Right, in some cases, they could push the services under.
How deep the sewer is. If the sewer is 20 feet deep over there, it's, you know, pretty easy to hit that number. So it's not mandatory they hook on, correct?
Right.
If they were to sell their property, do they have to hook on if they're annexed?
Same, same thing. As long as the services are, are working fine, and you're not, you're not making any substantial improvements to the property, like building a huge addition on or anything like that.
Oh, right.
You know, then you can continue on with those services.
Okay, so, and it's their determination if their services are working correctly, or is there somebody?
They add in the Health Department. I mean, the Health Department permits the well and septic, so, you know, they would also help make the determination on whether or not it's needing, it's okay to just repair it, or if significant replacement is necessary.
Okay. I get, you know, that is the biggest concern, is the cost. I mean, that's a lot of money for retired on fixed income, and single mom with three kids. You know, they can't do it. I mean, so, that being said, I guess, should they try to figure out what it would cost? We'd have to get all the information, where the sewers are, how deep they are.
And you can contact our offices, and we can...
Yeah, I tried to go on the GIS to find them, but they weren't public, or I think I had to, you know, get an account or something.
Right, yeah, we have, we have atlases that'll show where the sewer and water is, so you can see what the situation is. Typically, they're on one side of the street for one service.
Right, I think the sanitary, on time, may be on the south side, and the water might be on the, the north, but I'm not 100% sure, so. So, that's, just so they have the knowledge of what it could possibly be. And so there's one already agreed?
Out of the four, in your na- in your particular area, yeah, one we received a petition for.
Okay, all right. One of the guys said he didn't get the, in fact, Joe.
Yeah, Joe didn't get a notice.
Didn't get a notice, sorry.
What was the last, what was the last name?
Melby.
Melby.
His house is on Mather, but he actually has...
On the corner.
On the street, I guess.
Okay. I think he's, I thought he might be the one that we actually received a petition for.
Oh, maybe it is.
So...
He was, he came over today.
All right.
Oh, question.
Oh, cool.
You know, we've been township since 97, and we, we've never even had a sidewalk. I don't get it. How do we become a city, a city, we don't even have a sidewalk?
Well, they, the city can, you know, as part of their, I'll let Alderman jump in as well, but, I mean, if they, we have a sidewalk program that we, we've started now, and so we start putting in links where, where links are necessary. So, it, it, you know, we prioritize them based on where the gaps are, and primarily by schools and parks are our first priority. But, you know, it'll probably be a someday project that, you know, a sidewalk would go in front of that house at some point.
It's refreshing to hear somebody wants to be on the sidewalk list.
I mean, what is the benefits, I guess, for the homeowners to switch away? It says there's all kinds of benefits for the city, but...
In, in general, if I was making an offer on your home, and I knew that you were inside the city of Batavia, I would know the services that I'm getting. I would recognize that I could connect to the city by being part of the city. In the long run, it's just, I personally believe it makes the property more valuable.
I mean, I would tell you that...
Cost to it.
There is, but you don't have to pay it today. If you don't want to, you are not required to do any of this work unless you want to.
And again, if they were to sell, they don't have to bring it up to that ordinance.
No, but if I liked your home, and you told me it was annexed, and I realized I had work to do, then I'd be making a decision, do I want to spend the money to do the work? That's up to me, up to me as a buyer.
That's it. I mean, that kind of puts them in a real gray area if they can't afford to do the work.
Well, you're getting, you're not required to do anything. If there's a failure, then you would have to, you would come to that decision anyways. And even then, the city has a precedent where we do not require you to pay 100% of your fees upfront. In many cases, we have broken it down into multiple years. The point is not to force someone out of their home, the force is to help somebody connect to our, our city network.
Yeah, I had to get a well pump a year ago. That was $3,500.
You probably bought yourself some time, then. So you probably don't need to connect just yet.
There you go. All right. So, I mean, is that a final decision, or does everybody have to be on board, all the, the four homes?
It's a vote, it's a vote by the council tonight to annex.
So it doesn't matter what the homeowners... You said there's already one that's on.
Me personally, if you stopped your feet and said, "I want no part of this," I would send it back to committee so we could discuss it.
Well, that, that would be...
Again, me personally, I, I think, I think it's a step in the right direction, but it's your property.
I just moved in, just as soon as...
The one, the one variable here in the room that, that we haven't talked about is, is that if you pick up your phone and dial 911, you're going to go to the Tricom Dispatch Center, and that phone call's going to be identified whether or not you're in the city of Batavia, or you're in an unincorporated city. If you're unincorporated, then the dispatcher will turn the call over to the Kane County Sheriff, and you'll wait for a policeman to come from wherever in the county they may have, find a squad car to come to. So, you know, I, I would tell you, I've had several people ask me that same question over the years, and probably the most valuable thing I think you probably pick up is the instantaneous response of the Batavia Police Department to your house if you need it. Because right now, you're, this whole town is all wired up, and they know exactly what numbers are in the city and what aren't. And the numbers we're reading here tonight are ones that are up sitting up there on the computer that you're not in the city, and when you dial the phone, it goes right to the dispatcher and tells them right on the screen in front of them, this one belongs to Kane County, or this one's in the city of Batavia, or Geneva, St. Charles, or whatever. The fire's a little bit different, because when you're in the unincorporated area, you're in the fire protection district, so you get the same fire department response, everybody does, but the police is, is different. And sometimes if it's a real emergency, they'll tell us, and then Batavia may, in support of the county, come over and try to respond to some real drastic emergency. But I've had several people tell me they were very pleased when they found out that they were going to be covered by the Batavia Police Department if something happens, or they get in a squabble with somebody, or something, breaking their mailbox down, or whatever's going on.
Well, I've had the sheriff come over before.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that you, when you call him, he's not probably in Batavia, he could be any place in Kane County. So you may wait for a while to get the sheriff.
Yeah.
Your Honor, I, I think that this also makes it easier to plan for the eventual hookup. If for some reason your septic field fails, the county is not going to permit rebuilding the septic field, correct?
Right, that's correct.
And, and then you have to do it on an emergency basis, where you're going to have to hook up to the city sewer on an emergency basis, and you're going to have to get annexed at the same time. So that, to me, is the backwards way of trying to do this. If you're annexed in already, and then you say, "Okay, I can afford in five years to be able to hook up to the sanitary sewer, and in another five years, I can hook up into the water," you know, then you can do it one at a time and not have to try to do everything at once.
Still a lot of money.
I, I understand that.
No matter how you look at, I mean, I know what you're saying, trying to give...
Right, and if you know that you're already annexed, and then you take them as they fail and replace them, or re-install to city services, I think that's a better way to do it.
Yeah. So, okay, so she's new to her home.
I just...
And he just retired, so, and it was very short notice, so they're both very, like, gut-frightened.
Be followed.
Yeah.
Well, again, nothing's going to change unless you decide that...
They've been trying to do this ever since I lived here.
They have?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have, if you look at the city map, we have a lot of pockets on this. I live, I have, my backyard is a township pocket. Three of the houses, or four houses we already did on Whipple Street are right down a block from me. So it's something that we've been trying to do for a long time to alleviate those. And, you know, I think that this is a, a good move for those lots. I think it definitely adds to the value of the lot over time. And somebody else that wants to buy that house, do any renovations to it or anything, and doesn't want to deal with the fact that they're on well, water and sewer, or well and septic, that's going to make a difference when that house gets sold.
It took two years to get the mailboxes put on our side of the street, after Peggy Haynes got thrown over and killed.
That's, that's the federal government, that's not us.
That was bad form.
I fully understand that.
All right, well, anyway, there's two homeowners that are, because it's so rushed, he just got his, uh, two days ago?
Yeah, well...
Saturday or Friday?
They dropped off a thing saying, "I wasn't there."
Yeah, so...
And then I caught the postman the second day, and then he brought it the day after. I just got it yesterday.
Yeah, we'll require us...
It's very, you know, it's very fast for them, and then...
There are two notices that we do. The one is...
It said final notice, second notice, I didn't get the first one, but...
Okay. Well, what we normally do is we send out two notices. We send a primary letter first, asking for the voluntary petitions, and that's just a regular letter that comes to the city. And then before this committee happens, we have to send a letter by certified mail at least 10 days prior, and try to do 15 days, just to give them extra time. We do a certified notice to the property owners that are being affected by the annexation. So there's two actual letters that the city sends.
I didn't get one first thing. Did you get the first one?
I don't have, I don't have the certified notices in front of me, but, you know, we do make sure we send them, so...
And Joel told me he didn't even get one.
I'll, I'll check and see, but I...
Those are certified mail, correct?
Those are certified mail, so we have proof of mailing, yes.
Okay.
I told him he should come, but he says he's got to get up at 1:00.
All right, so that is the, their feelings. So if it gets voted through tonight, they don't have any, anything they can do about it, or...
All right. Yeah, I've thought about this a lot from when we were initially deciding as the plan to do all these annexations. And what kind of, I understand the, you have your own property rights, and you want to make sure that you bought the house that you bought, and things kind of stay the same. But one of the things that, since I've moved here, and I just took a call on this issue yesterday, where a resident was talking about their rights as a city resident, where one of these lots is right next to them, and it's wholly bounded by city, and it's township, and that person is in cooperating with some of the code compliance, and it kind of creates some anxiety in the neighborhood about what they can or can't do. So with the kind of that in mind, we're talking about, had this been, it would be, my, my thinking would be different if we were annexing you outside of the city limits and trying to add to the city size. But we're trying to put some consistency across the board within the city limits, because it is one of those things that has been pretty maddening on city council, is, "Well, this house is, but that one isn't, and this one is, and this one," and it, it creates a whole bunch of different rules. And I've always been struck by major problem with the state of Illinois is we have 7,000 different governan- governing bodies, and that's because everybody has their own little piece of the pie. And if they would just kind of consolidate some of these government entities together, be a little more efficient, that would be a plus for all of us in Illinois. And it shouldn't be lost on you that those things that you're talking about, those financial impacts, would impact all of us if we were in the same situation where we were in the township. So when we've had these discussions, we have put a lot of thought into them, that you should be talking with our city staff about that, so that they can make arrangements, so that you're not coming up going, "How do, do I eat this month, or do I get water hookup?" That's not the goal of any of this, because you're going to be our neighbors. You're going to be our residents, we need to service you and be able to take care of you. And part of that is, now as residents, you'll be able to work with city staff and get your rights, and when you don't, you talk to one of us now, and we will work with you on that. Because those have been constantly talked about, "How do we do it? How do we do it the right way?" And I think, kind of to your point, why it's been talked about for years, is it just hasn't really gotten to that point. And now we are at that point. We want you to know there are lots of options out there, there are lots of ways to work with you on it.
Okay, I mean, I think the biggest one is just the eventual cost of what it's going to be.
Sure. And you may or may not own the property when...
Yeah, 20, 25% of the value are...
You, you may or may not own the property when the improvements are made.
Right.
It might be the next person to purch- especially if you just made, made a major investment in your well.
Well, that probably puts their minds into...
Yeah, if you just made a major investment in your well, I think it is unlikely that you'll need to hook up to our water service in the next year.
Because a lot of those things that, if the, all of your septic and everything had failed anyways, that would be a lot of money, too. So, it's those things that are going to be balanced. They're huge numbers, and they can be intimidating, and they can be really scary in how to plan for it. But knowing that we are already thinking about these things, and how to best do it, do you just put it on your tax bill? Do you make monthly payments? Those are all for the city staff to work with you on.
For your fees, for your hookup fees, your...
Yes.
Still got to pay the, the work.
Right. And you, and that's where you would have those, had your field failed anyways.
Why don't they just, if they want to annex then, why don't they do it? Why don't, why don't the city just do it? I don't get it.
I believe that's been discussed.
Well, you're faced with, well, you're faced with an issue out there, that if your water or sewer lines break, or well goes bad, the county's probably not going to let you re- repair that. They're going to tell you, you're going to hook onto this municipal water system at that point. Somebody there made a decision when you bought the property, that you obviously knew that was the situation, and that sooner or later, something may happen. So that's just, that's nothing to do with the city's policy, that's the county's policy. Says that they will not allow septic systems to continue to be repaired and replaced and whatever, if there's an existing sanitary sewer of a city government next to it. They want them all hooked up and get rid of the septic systems in the yard. So you're, you're going to be faced with that at some point in time, if in fact, you know, we're not holding a gun to your head right now and telling you, "You have to do it," as we've already said to you, that this is your right to just continue to live there the way it is. But if something happens, you're going to be on the hook to pay for it, and the county's going to tell you, you're going to do that, and the city has no responsibility to it other than we have the sewer there for you to hook onto. But we don't run around hooking sewers on the houses without somebody paying for it, because it's unfair to all the existing sewer holders that have already paid for the system, to start paying for somebody who hasn't paid for it to get a sewer. So we're kind of in between the rock and the hard place here, too. So, you know, you're a little island sitting there in the middle of a bigger, much bigger pond, and sooner or later, something was probably going to happen, that's going to mandate that you're going to have to, to do it, and it's going to be something that the city's not telling you, you can't repair your septic system. The county government's going to be in there, but the Health Department telling you, "You aren't going to repair this system."
Yeah, we had one actual recent annexation, where they found out shortly after the annex that they did have a septic problem, and they decided to hook onto the city sewer. So we're working with them on the, the fees and everything as part of that, but they, you know, they realized that was a, a problem that happened immediately after annexation, and the cost to try and do any repairs was, was going to be more expensive than it was to connect to the city sewer. So, you know, even if you were allowed to replace your septic system, you may find that the cost may be much more than it would be to connect to the city sewer anyway.
I heard we just won an award for our water taste as well.
I drank it right out of town.
When I was 10, I didn't. It was not good when I was 10.
I know, I haven't really...
It's not good. Um, I just got a question about tax increase. In the first paper, I think it said approximately 4%. Like, what is, like, how much plus or minus are we looking at? Because like, I, I am also on a fixed budget. I have a teacher in East Aurora, and I have three children, and I, I bought my house with a specific budget.
Right. Yeah, and generally, we've, we've used 4% as the increase in taxes, because what happens is the fire district has a, is a taxing body that comes off of your tax bill, and the city of Batavia then has added to your tax bill. So the differential between that is about a 4% change. So, you know, that, it is an increase in taxes, but, you know, the school district, every year, you know, they levy a significantly higher levy than the city does. So, you know, that, that is impacting your taxes more than that. But one thing I was going to mention is that... one thing I was going to mention is that you may want to check with your insurance company, because once property is annexed into the city, city has an ISO, what's called an ISO rating of number one, which is the highest rating you can get. And when you're in the township, it's either an eight or nine rating, depending on, you know, where you are. So you may actually find that you could get a savings in your homeowner's insurance on top of it that might take the place of some of that. So you would check with your insurance agent to see what they would say.
This pillar is like really.
I know, it's.
Without seeing all.
Tried to move.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then the, all, the ordinance that we have before us is 19-40, annexing 741, 749, 757, and 801 Pine Street. I'll make the motion that we, we approve that.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of ordinance 19-40. Any discussion?
Do we know who the aldermen are going to be?
Six.
Six.
So Mike and Nick are going to be your aldermen now.
We got first call the roll.
Okay. As soon as we vote, if it passes.
First call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Ordinance 19-40 is approved. 13 yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving to 15, which is ordinance 19-41, annexing 615 and 621 Pine Street. Alderman Wolf.
These would be the last two addresses for tonight. I'm at 615 and 621 Pine Street. Scott, are these both involuntary?
These are both involuntary, but half of the property is already in the city limits. The northern half was in the original boundary of the city when it was incorporated.
Okay.
So it just happens to be that these properties are split by the city limits.
That's a new one. I don't think you've had that before. We have half of a lot. Okay, well, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 19-41, annexing 615 and 621 Pine Street.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Chanset for the approval of ordinance.
Callahan.
It hurts his heart when you do that.
Please get me confused. Ordinance 19-41 for annexing 615 and 621 Pine Street. First call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Ordinance 19, 19-41 is approved. 13 yes, no, no, and one absent. Okay, moving to item 689, which is ordinance 19-38, ran in conditional use for microblading and permanent makeup establishment at 9 East Wilson Street, Gabriel Sosa applicant. Who's got this one?
Take that as well, your honor. Um, this is for Urban Styles to add microblading to the downtown mixed-use district and permanent makeup. Basically, this is a legal definition that by our ordinance change, has to be a conditional use in the downtown mixed-use district. Pretty simple, straightforward. I think it's something that a lot of businesses are doing now, and I think it's something that you won't even notice is there downtown. Do you have any counsel? Arnie?
And just, Scott advised me before the meeting that the applicant could not make it to the meeting tonight.
Any other?
Nobody say anything to me about it?
No. I don't think we're going to notice it. I just, as a point of reference, I just wanted to make note that one of our downtown tattoo parlors that's downtown actually had art shows and had, I'd say, 150 people down through the downtown business district for that one event alone, at an art show that they now have on, onsite. And really kind of surprising, you know, to see that many people involved in it, so. I'll make motion then, that we approve ordinance 19-38, approving a conditional use permit for microblading and permanent makeup establishment in the downtown mixed-use district, 3 East Wilson for Gabriel Sosa, Urban Styles Salon applicant.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Chanset for the approval of ordinance 19-38 for the conditional use for microblading and permanent makeup establishment at 3 East Wilson Street. Any discussion? First call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Ordinance 19-38 is approved. 13 yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving to 17, which is resolution 19-061-R, authorizing execution of certified community form for exempt properties to be included in the June 1st, 2019 Kane County Stormwater Ordinance Update. Who's got this one? Alderman McFadden.
Thank you. Over the last two years, Kane County, through the Kane County Stormwater Management Planning Committee and Technical Advisory Committee, has been working on updating the original stormwater ordinance that dates to 2002. The ordinance went through a public review period in March of 2019, and is currently set to be adopted in June in 2019. And what we're contemplating here is a form that would allow certain properties to apply for an exemption based on the fact that they were already well down the development process, and we want to avoid changing the rules in the middle of the game on them. And so there's a list of, I believe, six properties that we've received applications for, that were determined eligible for it. And so this would be to adopt the, the form as the standard application for, for them to be able to do that. So I'd make the motion that we approve a resolution 1961-R, authorizing execution of certified community form for exempt properties to be included in the June 1st, 2019 Kane County Stormwater Update. Any discussion?
First call the roll.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Resolution 19-61-R is approved. 13 yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving to 18, which is resolution 19-062-R, approval of an agreement between the City of Batavia and Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 224 for January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. And our HR Director, Wendy.
Thank you. I bring before you a three-year agreement between the City of Batavia and the Fraternal Order of Police, the FOP, Police Sergeants. The details are listed. We've discussed in regards to just some small changes in the contract. Feel that this has been reached through good faith bargaining. Very pleased with the agreement, and it'll give us some long-term, three-year agreement than we've been able to do in the past few years. So just ask for approval, and if there's any discussion or questions.
I think we have an error here in the agenda. It says December 31st, 2019. It should be 2021.
Yes, yeah. The, the memos, sorry, I didn't notice that.
The record reflect the change. Anybody have any questions on it? I think it was well-covered the other night in our executive session. Wendy did a real nice job of explaining it all. It was very detailed. Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Callahan. Meitzler. Okay, they all sounded the same. And second by Alderman Salat. Any discussion? First call the roll.
Sorry. Meitzler.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Ordinance 19-62-R is approved by a vote of 13 yes, no, no, and one absent. Okay, moving to 19, which is ordinance 19-42, amending Chapter 5, Title 1 of the City Code and appointing standing committee chairman and vice chairman. Who's going to run this one?
It'll be me. Get myself out of this one. All right. As a result of a lively discussion at the Committee of the Whole on May 14th this year, it was voted on and approved to recommend to the city council to approve a change to Chapter 5, Title 1 of the City Code, which deals with how we appoint committees. And the change was to remove the requirement of at least eighty, at least an 85% attendance record as an eligibility requirement to be chairman of a standing committee of the whole. The ordinance is attached. And as a result of that, the Committee of the Whole selections were made, and the committee chairman and vice chairman were selected as follows. Community Development Chairman Marty Callahan, Vice Chairman Nick Serone. Public Utilities Chairman Michael O'Brien, Vice Chairman Drew McFadden. Government Services Chairman Dan Chanset, Vice Chair Scott Salvati. And City Services Chairman Alan Wolf and Vice Chairman Michael Rosado. I move we, move we approve ordinance 1942, amending Chapter 5, Title 1 of the City Code and appointing standing committee chairman and vice chairman.
Second.
Okay, moved by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of the revised many structure. Chairman, any discussion? Alderman Chanset.
I would just note that as I'm a beneficiary of the change, and as a result of the discussion, I would choose to vote present for this ordinance. And then one other question, was the mayor pro temp supposed to be in this order, or is that a separate?
I was, you already beat me to that question. I think that may have been inadvertently omitted. It should be there, I think.
Okay. I would ask that whoever made the motion to amend it to include appointing this guy as our mayor pro temp.
I made that motion. I would amend, amend it to name Alan Wolf mayor pro temp.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Callahan to amend the ordinance to name Alan Wolf as mayor pro temp.
I think there was some confusion about, there may be some old code that's still out there somewhere. But so that everyone knows, because I made the original motion, back on June 22nd, the original ordinance that was passed, 15-25, the minutes from that meeting, Alderman Callahan made the amendment to the motion, or to the amendment, to remove the sentence that Alderman being from the same ward cannot be on the same committee, and adding the 85%. What that basically does, we did approve it when it was amended unanimously. So that did take away the, that both Aldermen from the same ward can't be on the same, because it's moot now, since we are all one committee.
We're the whole, yeah.
So that was, just to clarify, I know there was some concern about that, but even after the last one, Alan and I were on the same.
Right.
For City Services. So that shouldn't be a concern on this one. It was just the, after last week's discussion, removing the 85%.
Yeah, we swapped thinking that that was still.
We swapped thinking that.
Are you okay with the switch or not?
I don't care. I can do whatever, I'll do whatever I'm asked to do.
Good.
Within reason.
He got the last vote, so, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on it.
Public Utilities is not that bad.
I don't care. I'm good with it. I'm happy with it. Proud to be, proud to be here. Well, so you're going to be Public Utilities now?
Sure.
Okay. I'll carry on as Government Services then. Do we need to make another amendment?
I think we do.
No, because that was all part of the original that was approved. And Roman, if you can verify this, the original that was passed in 2015 at city council struck that two Aldermen cannot be on the same. So that was what the law was. I did look up the current ordinance as it, it's online, and it does not mention that. So my motion at last week's cow was just to strike the 85. Everything else remained the same, because the original, that two Aldermen from the same ward was stricken four years ago.
Well, they're looking at men in the listing.
Right, as far as that, yes. Which goes back to why you can do that.
Sorry to look into that.
Stay the way it's in the memo, and the way it's in the ordinance as written.
The ordinance, if they want to switch the, back to the chair, that was what it was, right? In the, in the memo.
In the memo, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not hearing anybody really having a problem.
No, there's no problem.
No, there is no problem.
Yeah.
There's no problem.
I just need to know who's on what committee.
That's a great question. Who's on first?
Just read the memo.
All right. I'll reread the, the memo with the committees as in the memo. Community Development Chairman Martin Callahan, Vice Chairman Nick Serone. Public Utilities Chairman Mike O'Brien, Vice Chair Scott Salvati. Government Services Chairman Dan Chanset, Vice Chairman Drew McFadden. And City Services Chairman Alan Wolf, Vice Chairman Michael Rosado.
Beautiful. Very nice.
And Mayor Pro Temp.
And Mayor Pro Temp.
Well, actually, if you guys really want to read the ordinance, I mean, your pro temp, all it says that whoever's the available council member who has the longest tenure service is the mayor pro temp for that period of time. So you don't need to officially appoint a mayor pro temp at this time.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, but Alan likes the pageantry of it.
Wow.
Bravo.
You're right.
I was stalling so Tony could get here.
Is he going to be able to vote on this? Do we need to go through this again?
I said, I said put it on consent, so.
Alderman Malay, we're voting on the committee assignments of who's the chairman and vice chairman, and I'm sure you don't have any problems.
As discussed.
Yeah.
Ask him to read it again.
It's all good.
One more time.
No.
Let the first call the roll.
Okay.
The mayor pro temp.
Malay, or I'm sorry, McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chanset.
Present.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Present.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Well, that vote was, as I understand, 12 yes, two presents, and no no's, right?
Yep.
Thank you for getting us through that. Okay, moving to 20, the administrators' report.
I'd like to keep my remarks about the projects a little brief tonight, because I'd like the opportunity to introduce you to Griffin Price this evening, our new communication coordinator. So the other things that I, I just wanted to inform everyone of is that a temporary certificate of occupancy has been issued for the first floor of the treatment plant on Flynn Street. We're awaiting the final inspection of the elevator to allow occupancy of the second floor. Also, on Saturday, May 18th, the Batavia Police Department hosted their police candidate testing process to establish their new candidate eligibility testing process to establish their new candidate eligibility list, and there were 86 applicants that came out to take the test. They received an orientation presentation, followed by a five-phase job-based physical abilities test, and then completed the day with a two-hour written examination. And so this, the results of that will establish our new eligibility list. We also want to thank everybody who came out to support the Cop on Top event at our local Dunkin' Donuts. Our police officers take their time to go out there and, and receive donations for the upcoming Special Olympics Summer Games, which this year will be held Friday, June 7th through Sunday, June 9th, and that's going to take place at the Normal West High School. And with that, I would like to introduce everyone to Griffin Price, our new communications coordinator. He is, he grew up here. He's a hometown guy, and previously, he was working for the Lombard Park District, where he was marketing and communications manager. During his tenure there, he started in 2016, but the two subsequent years since they hired him, the Lombard Park District received first place and the People's Choice Award by the Illinois Parks and Recreation Association Communications Section. And then in 2019, he was awarded a personal honor, the Achievement Award. It's called the Vision Award, and that's for contributions that he made to his profession in marketing and communications for Parks and Rec, but also for the service that he provided to other professionals as well. I think what impressed me most in the hiring process was a sentence that I read in his cover letter that I knew he would fit right in. It said, "I found the best investments of my time have been with service." So with that, I'd like to introduce Griffin Price.
Oh, boy. We're not. Hello, council. I'm glad that this is not Game of Thrones, which I have just wrapped up. Councils have come a long way since then, and it's good that it's about the quality of life now, instead of whether or not someone should have life. But I'm here, and I'm happy to be here. I was here for 22 years. I moved to Lombard about three years ago, in a position that opened up over there, and then I started working at Lombard, and I had been commuting from Batavia to Wooddale and to Lombard a little bit, and now I live in Lombard, and I'm commuting to Batavia. So it's really wonderful. I've already gotten to meet so many of the staff. You guys seem like a great council. I see a lot with the future of consistency and improving efficiency with communication, as well as staying on top of graphic work, doing some major facelifts. I know some people may not be excited about this idea, but hear me out. I do think a new logo would be great for the city.
That's bold.
Now, I have successfully rebranded a park district, the Batavia Parks Foundation, which I served on for a year, golf course, and athletics center, also came up with new brands for three other facilities, and have been through the process as well through my education. I got a degree in advertising from the University of Illinois. And throughout all that experience, what we got from the documents that Laura provided for me is great research, but you guys got a bad product. And I think we can amend that and use that research and turn this project into a success with a very limited budget. I think that we don't have to spend what you guys spent to go into it, because you already have the groundwork. So I'm excited to bring some of that to you, as well as some improvements and some excitement into the city, and I am really proud to be here.
You do know that you have to like get 15 of us to agree on that.
Oh, yeah. I totally understand, and if you guys aren't for it, that's okay.
If you want Game of Thrones, talk about.
Oh, I know.
We designed really well by committee here.
Yeah. But I do think it could be a really positive thing, and having been through this process so many times, and being on boards, as well as talking to boards about these things, I know what you guys are facing, and I'd love to bring that expertise.
I just have one question. Are you going to miss the Lilac Festival now that you won't be covering them?
I will be still living in Lombard, so I'll get to see it.
Well, we welcome you to our community, as I told you when you talked with me prior, you know, when you came on board, that there are those on this board that knew you previously, and things to say about you from your old days. So I'm very optimistic that we've got a highly talented individual who's going to bring some fresh new ideas to Batavia, so we welcome you aboard.
I appreciate it. Thank you for the honor, everybody.
Okay, community reports. Community Development.
Does not look like anything for tomorrow.
All right. City Services.
The only thing we have is a discussion on the Mill Creek watershed planning overview.
Government Services.
Nothing to report.
Public Utilities.
Nothing to report.
All right. We have other business from the council today. All right, I just want to take a moment under the mayor's report to share with you some experiences I've had. Last week, I was out of town three different days. Twice, I was in Oak Brook at a few-page mayor's and manager's office for regional meetings of the mayors of the region. And one day last week, I spent the day downtown at Willis Tower with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. And this weekend, I spent the weekend at the State Capitol in Springfield. I was at a little festivity on Saturday night in the State Capitol building in the House chambers. So I had the opportunity to hear and listen and talk to a whole bunch of people either have opinions about state government of Illinois today, or people who are in state government today. And I got to tell you, you know, I think everybody's heart is in the right place, and maybe their mind is, but where the weakness is, is in the pocketbook of this city, of this state, because the, as near as I can tell, the state of Illinois is basically broke. I mean, they don't, they got more bills coming at them on the table than they have revenue to pay the bills, and I'm not sure that they got much money to do anything. And so I just want to caution us all is, whatever it is that we think we want to do, any new ideas, programs, capital improvements, whatever have you, as long as we can do it, thinking we're not going to get any state money, because I don't think we are. I think we can do just about anything we want, but I wouldn't count on the state of Illinois to be there to help you in any way, shape, or form. I think it's that bad. And everybody I talked to down there seems to be of the same opinion. It sounds like there's a whole bunch of people who are trying to re-figure it out and try to change it, go put it in a different direction, but it's in pretty rough shape down there financially, and it's not going to be an easy turnaround, and there's going to be, have to be a lot of, of pain and suffering on a political perspective, because there's a lot of people that are envisioning new roads, or railroad stations, or highways, or, you know, new programs in their community and whatever, that are, you know, repairing dams and everything else, that we're going to have, need a whole bunch of influx of state money, and I sure don't see where that state money is, and I don't think the state knows where it is. So we should go into government as we sit here, knowing that we are, should be thankful, and this is where I really am thankful. I go sit and talk to a whole bunch of my other peers in the region, including this thing we talked about earlier about the proclamation, and everybody, there's a lot of very dedicated, good-hearted mayors in this area, but many of them are running towns that are on the verge of bankruptcy. The revenue streams are so low, the reduction in state income tax, the lack of sales tax, some cities have greatly drastically dropped in their sales tax generations, and property values have gone down, but property taxes have gone up, and it's just one bad thing after another. So I'm not sure where a lot of other places are going. Batavia, I would suggest we still have our head above water, and we can keep it above water, and we've got a great council and a great community. So we got a lot of things going for us, but there's a lot of us around us here that are sitting here watching us with great envy and wishing they could be part of us, or trying to figure out how we do things. And I'm getting a lot of calls and inquiries from other mayors about, how are you doing this, or how did you do this, or whatever, and we're trying to give as much support and answers as we can, but a lot of this is just bad planning, or bad something on their end of the table, and there's just, and then our friends down at the Illinois General Assembly come up with all kinds of little sneaky bills that change something just briefly, or just change it a little bit. And a lot of it, at the end of the day, really it becomes unfunded mandates, where they're trying to sneak something through that somehow or another is going to start costing some cities some money. And that's just what is, it's, it's a real rampant game down there, and, you know, I just wish there was an identity committee down there that identified everything that everybody was trying to duty on all these bills, because they overwhelm the place with bills, and then a few of them creep through, because they get the votes, and nobody really understands what they're voting for, and we get ourselves in a deep mess. And I'm just very fearful that that, that's the deep mess that we're, we're going to get ourselves into. So I'm cautious, and I just want to share this concern with all of you, that we are very fortunate to live in Batavia today, because we got our heads financially above water, and I think we've got a great staff that's running the place and knows what they're doing. But anybody that comes in here and says, well, let's do this, but let's get a state grant, boy, that's the person you got to watch, because they don't know, they haven't been watching what's going on in Illinois, because I'm not so sure there's any state grants to get. And so we just, we just got to be very, very cautious about what it is that we're going to do as a town, and keep our head above water, because that's about where it's at right now, and I'm not sure we're going anyplace else very quickly. And as I say, it's a real rough water down there with, with the politics at the moment, and I'm not saying it's a Democrat thing or a Republican thing. I think there's probably blame to be shared by everybody around, but they've, they've got themselves into a situation where they don't have the money to run the state, or to, or to do anything new with the state. And so that gets me to the next thing that I just want to share within my public opinion about it, and that's this whole Illinois discussion that's going on about recreational marijuana. And at the end of the day, I don't know if I have a strong feeling, one way or another, for recreational marijuana, but the one thing that I do have a feeling about is something that Chief Yule has been sharing with me, that I know is high concern of, of though himself and others in his rank, and that's this proposal blowing around the state, that we're going to create this recreational marijuana, but we're also going to give people, you can go to the store and buy it, or you can raise it in your backyard. And that raising that stuff in your backyard is a really interesting solution to things, because number one, we're supposedly going to try to keep it away from the younger people, so you got to be of a certain age to buy it, but when you can grow it in your backyard, or you can go over and steal it out of your neighbor's backyard, or whatever you're going to do, you're not going to basically be able to control who, what age groups gets it. If it's in the first grade, or wherever it is, they're going to be able to get their hands on it. And so I think that is, that is a real bad sign of the times of where we're going with that thing. And, you know, the whole idea that we're going to get a lot of money for the state to respond to the state's problems by taxing this, well, that makes a lot of sense if you got a product that's been grown properly, but when you got them all grown in the backyard, I would suggest to you, there ain't going to be any tax on any plant and any backyard in the state of Illinois. So that, that kind of nullifies the whole idea of revenue for recreational marijuana. So I don't know where the state's going with this one. I'm just watching it, standing off to the side, trying to be very supportive of the police department, and because I've been here so darn long, I get now some of the folks in Springfield are calling me up, asking me to give them some ideas and things, so I've been shooting my mouth off a lot recently, I got to tell you that. But there's just, there's just some stuff going on here that's not making a lot of sense to me right now. So when you have a mayor's report, and you got the public's eye, and you've got, you have to sit here and listen to me rant, you all get a chance to hear what I have to say, and that's the end of my rant for the night. But I just want to let you know, I think there's some things wrong here, and that all of you, I don't care your positions, I just want you to know, I think we all need to be aware of it and watch it very carefully and cautiously, because things could go in the wrong direction here pretty easily. Chief Yule, you got anything you'd like to say about that?
I've got a lot of things I want to say, but we have no time very nicely.
Well, I just want to commend the Batavia Police Department under Chief Yule's leadership, because they've really done a lot to kind of try to stay ahead of this thing and keep us aware of what's really going on and understand it. And the longer it carries on, the more complicated it gets, and the more I fear that I see political fixes kind of coming into the play, and I'm not sure where those go at the end of the day. But just as a final statistic, being the chairman of the tri-city ambulance board, which Alderman Wolfe serves on it with me, we have two representatives from each one of the tri-cities that basically run the thing, two from Geneva, two from St. Charles, and Alderman Wolfe and myself, I'm the chairman. And as a result of that, we, you know, we're, we're very restricted up there about sharing of information, because there's that HIPAA law that really is not a bad law, because it protects people if they have a medical condition, that, you know, you can't come out and release what happened and what their sickness is, and there's a lot of bad stuff if we did that. So we have to be very restricted about what information we give out. But one of the things I did ask that, that we do is, is that I asked the staff without any names, addresses, or whatever, to take all three of the tri-cities ambulance calls last year, and tell the board how many calls we responded to between the five ambulances that are in the fleet at the moment that had drug in their background, some kind of a drug issue. And the answer to my question was 780 calls. Now, that's for the three towns, but if you do the math on that, that's about two a day, someplace in Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, and some of that's marijuana, some of it's opioids, some of it's LSD, or some of the other mind-boggling drugs. But we, we've got a problem with that, and I, you know, I just throw that on the mix to show my concern as the mayor, as to, you know, you let this thing start rolling out here too quickly, and I know what the number was last year, and you legalize this thing, needless to say, I'm going to be asking what the, what the new number is this year, because I got to believe that, that's going to go up significantly. So we shall see what we shall see.
Mayor, if I could just add one thing to that, you're absolutely correct. I think if, if there's one worst thing in a bad piece of legislation right now, it's the home grow portion of the draft legislation that they're considering, up to five plants per household. Oversight would almost be impossible for us, but as far as the, the medical issues associated with the legalization of recreational marijuana, we're also concerned that in the draft legislation right now, they don't regulate the potency of the marijuana. They're basically ignoring that, and the marijuana of today is totally different than the marijuana of 20 or 25 years ago. The science that's put into the, the growing and cultivation of marijuana, and the extraction of the THC product from it, is light years ahead of what it was 25 or 30 years ago. So we're very concerned about that, and it doesn't seem like the General Assembly is at all.
Yeah, I think my own personal view on it is, they're, they're so concerned about the money aspect of it, the tax side of it, I think they realized after they proposed the original legislation that they wrote, that, well, we could lose half of the tax money from it. So it will not, I don't think it will have that provision in it when it comes out, when it gets to the floor. It'll definitely be different by the time they get there. If they're going to want to use any of that money to try to do anything in this state, that provision will be gone.
Well, part of the strategy of which I was induced with last week, as I made my rounds around the region, was is that they wanted every mayor that would listen, including myself, to shoot their mouth off at a meeting like this, and stir the pot up a little bit, because that needs to be understood by the greater public as to what is happening here with that, that law, and what it could or could not do, and why it needs to be rubber-stamped and brought down to a much more controllable atmosphere than what some of these people are.
I think they need to look at other states that have already done this, and the ways that they've done it, and the things that they've found after they did it. So I think there's a lot to be learned out there before they decide to pass any legislation.
So in the mayor's report, sorry to interrupt you, but I felt the necessary need to share. Well, now Alderman Brown is calling, so I have, so, oh, Alderman Wolfe.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolfe, seconded by Alderman Salvati. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.